At the moment. As councilor, three gentlemen there, I start with just one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure sir.
Big to seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds separate this town. Who did that change forward, that partnership and Kingsley. Up to my attention over the last couple of days. Where the major intersection for Kingsley where it was tracked by. Which was down on the original planings. Hence four hundred yards further up, there's another road been put in. And hence falls another two hundred yards further up, there's another road been put in. None of those wrong plans for Kingsley. As we've got the council elected for that stay. I'm just wondering why and how. Those two rooms and talking to the contractors, they said their service rooms. But there's no inclination if they return back to what it's supposed to be, which is open land. So can somebody A tell me how it's going to happen? And B will they wish for reinstatement? On the second point, this is very good one. Last month I was turning to meeting, spoke to the. Two for mayor about the condition of Frederick's wood and the trees that have been felled. None been replaced. He promised to get back to me and I haven't had an reply.
Thank you. If I'll pass on the word bar clerk.
I can't answer the question on Kingsley, but. I can't answer the question on Kingsley, but a letter isn't opposed to you regarding Frederick's wood. The only way that people could hold with you was by mail and that letter was mailed off this week.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
That can answer.
I'm happy to. Hi, I can't comment too much on what happened prior to this council. But if you pop me an email, my details are on the website with your question and the map and the location of what's going on. I can reply again as soon as possible.
How's your life?
I can't comment on what happened before this council. They were just, if I'm correct, the planning commission was granted way before this council was elected. By the previous council. Yep, so I can send you an email and I can route out this information for you. I'll provide anything I can get.
Okay. Thank you. Let's just share that if there's any question on the minutes and past decisions. Sorry, can you hear me now?
I can't hear you, too close to that microphone.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you. I suggest that if there's any questions regarding past decisions, if they are logged on the minutes and all official decisions are logged on our previous meetings. We want to suggest that we ask our clerk to look into the previous meetings and perhaps take. Look play and locate the item and send you a copy of the decision regarding those items. There are decisions that precede this council, like council of Sturridge mentioned. And we don't always have the answers, but we can certainly look into it and see what has been done before for your information if that helps. Um. This can be please. Council chairman please.
I just wanted to, and thank you for the question, you know. Thank you for the question. I just wanted to point out that the town council is not the planning authority. We are a council taking. And so I appreciate the concern, but what we would do as a town council and what your bricklayers would do. For Kingsley would be to make Breckland council aware as the planning authority and they obviously have enforcement powers. So if any work has taken place, that isn't particularly specified in the planning commission that was granted. Breckland have the power to enforce that if necessary, the power to force them to remove, you know, the access road or whatever straight away. It may be that it's subject to a reinstatement agreement. But we accept the town council and merely ask our opinion. We don't give the final say on any planning application. I think it's a valid point to raise and something I wasn't aware of. And council Sturridge is one of the two town councillors of Kingsley. I think it would be good of you to contact him. He can then speak to Breckland council on your behalf and to find out the details, but for them to enforce, not us.
Thank you. Couple more questions, gentlemen at the front. All right, side, go on then.
The month of August meeting, it was agreed that there would be a letter sent. All the lot owners on Munster Road in reference to what was happening. And also it was also agreed for that meeting, there would be a building meeting for all the lots of houses that happened within the month of June. That hasn't happened as we have now the end of June.
You're going to this one?
First of all, apologies for the fact that the meeting wasn't held. We have originally scheduled the meeting for the 11th of July. That has now had to be changed, unfortunately it catches with the other meeting. So that consultation will take place then. It's a purely allotment holder meeting. In respect of the feedback, we will see what feedback we can get. We also reliant on Breckland to get information from them as to what are the next steps? And we'll see if we can have that information available at the next allotment circus meeting.
Thank you. One in back please.
I think that our council has treated the public effectively. When in all the places, when on the internet, without the police call, without the lights on. We've got these fine characters standing on the porch and they're threatening mine. You wouldn't tell us how much you were paying the public. How much for them to stand here. We had to find out from the EDP letting out in one of their newscasts, which I think is very, very shocking. So the council has treated the public terribly. My question is, if councillor Jeremy does get in as the MP, will he reform how this council treats its public?
Welcome.
Any other questions, this is David. If I may, any items or any costs related to council business will be logged on finances of the council. There are the public domain and any requests, any email requesting that information is available for everybody. In Bushes, make us a note, I'm sure we can pass that information. The reason why this was necessary, I'm not going to go into details, it's been discussed before. On previous meetings, including with my doctor, the Higginson Harvey, I'm filling in for him today. And this is to discuss the lines that this was a necessary measure to control the good flow of the meetings. And making sure that nobody felt that they were attending the meeting and they felt somewhat inadequate or threatened by it. In regards to. Sorry, I can't hear you, this is David. It is for the moment, you will read the remarks later, as far as I know. This is out before the council, they can cancel, discuss and vote together. And if there's any questions regarding that, you can submit an email and ask a lot of details for an update.
We're going to pay that time, time, touch me on this issue to you to the future. Yes, okay.
There's no more questions on the topic? So, good evening.
Um, yeah, the reason I wanted to speak again is. The last, just after the last time I spoke, I was seeing the man from Alan York. Regarding removing information that I requested. And there was no information given back to me, other than we will go engage with you again. So that's why I'm back here. And one, the reason I'm here is because I'm. I'm trying to ask the council and each of you in your own individual private capacity. To at least look at some of the information we are giving you. I'm hoping that each. Each of you will, will look at the pieces of information I've sent to Alan York and Jose McCannbridge. Okay, now the last video that I forwarded to Alan York, I asked for it to be shared amongst all of you. Did any of you receive that? Probably not, because you might engage. Right, so. The reason, the reason I wanted to really speak is because the last time we tried to warn you about impending something, it was ignored. And it's all, what I noticed there was served on some of you, not all of you, in the previous administration. About the Pfizer smoking gun document, okay? This was in January of 2020. Some of you were handed a document known as the Pfizer smoking gun. The document revealed details of the known deaths and adverse reaction. If don't just pregnant women, miscarriages, infertility and stillbirths that were there in the trials before the rollout. You was have all handled this document if you was in. You ignored that document. You ignored the ask for the JAG centers with the sharp pandemic investigation. That was in spite of the manufacturer's own documentation.
So. Just I apologize to my own thinking. I was feeling that the shorthand that you are asking for, that you're making us thank you about is out of the remit of this council. I'm trying to say that I think the issue that you're trying to raise is out of the remit of this council. It's not someone this council can directly.
Getting to my point, and the reason I'm telling you this is because.
If you want to place your question.
Previously ignored and we're back into the realms of that.
Want to place your question then, that we have a limited amount of time for everybody, thank you.
Are you nine hours to our time? This interruption? Again. Okay, you ignored that information that we gave you. So everything now is in public domain, millions have died and suffered through the mid-time adverse events. Five states in the US are now investing in suing Pfizer. Asher's editor's report and the People's Hour peer reviewed paper on 73% death rate. Our 365 autopsy statement directly to the JAGs was the cause of all death. There is a list of evidences growing, growing, growing. Basically, here I am, so this is why I require you to. Okay, I have sent Alan York, Jose McCannbridge, four baby step pieces of information. Before fulfilled, I ask to be shared amongst the councillors. The information is decorated by the former and current climate scientists that you have trusted. Let's say in their narrative, they gave, they gave them the income through funding. And now retire reveal that the climate emergency was hot wash as they no longer need to rely on the funding or income. The 97% of scientists agree. That there is a man-made climate crisis means that 97% of scientists agree with their funders. This has come out in that video. When you research.
Sorry, I, I will. Is that a question, is that a statement, is that a question, sir?
This.
Because there we have a limited amount of time. If you, if you have a direct question, please make your question.
I get my question.
Unfortunately with.
Well, you're taking your time.
Well, I've been interrupted three times. I've been interrupted three times, I've timed this and it took three minutes. I've been interrupted three times, that is why we're on.
Police, please.
Can you see what you're doing?
Can I then ask you how much more in your statement is left to read in that? Is there a question at the end of it, please?
Right, now Chris Brooks put in a freedom of information request. All right, and he shares this with me. Is this being added?
It's just being forced, he hasn't put the blame, sir, in regards to that statement. It's just being forced that he hasn't put the request in. If he had put one in, you would have received the reply.
Carry on.
Get brief please.
I was told that the National Association of Local Councils is a group that you're part of. Well, I contacted these people and they can provide no evidence of a climate crisis. I contacted them again twice more. They can provide no evidence of a climate crisis, yet they've advised you guys to declare it. So why I'm asking is, give me your evidence. You need to go by and look at the information to counter the narrative.
You have to do that, Chris, sir?
In that respect, you have just said that they passed on the directions to us. And that's your answer, right there, sir? If they pass on the directions to us, we will follow guidelines. And how can, how do you expect us to make decisions in that?
You are following orders now, we've been here before.
Not following orders, we're following guidelines.
We have been here before in history.
You've had your question.
We have been here before in history and all the followers get discarded once they've carried out their tasks.
Also. I think you went over the time. You made your point with your question, thank you. If there's any more questions, we'll start with the actual meeting.
I just said my question. Right, I've sent you a notice out to each and every one of you, 20 of you last month. And I didn't get anything back about civilized children. Send the UNESCO non-mature document, which describes in their child abuse, paedophilia and the fact of no safety line. My question to you, I would like to point to all of you that we need another meeting with the Norfolk County Council. Can you set that meeting up in the county meeting, please? Well, that's one of the ones I've had.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid the answer is no, it's that's the.
And we got, let's just see what she said.
One at a time, please. I'm afraid that if there's a meeting with the county council they request, then you have to ask the meeting to the county council. We are not the county council and it's on our hands to organize meetings on their behalf, unfortunately.
Well, we did love.
It is, it is a quarter past seven, it's past our open forum time. We will, we have to make a start with the official meeting.
It was down to fifteen minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, they came down to the fifteen minute city, Jane, Jane saw it being announced. So why is it that you can't be bothered to do the things that matter to this town? These people, instead of all the rubbish that you spout. Things are serious matters which are going on and you can't give a toss and that is the problem. You see what we're getting to, guys? You see what we're getting to? All of our speakers were getting this noise.
Sir, our message can be reasonable. I'm afraid I'm going to ask you to, to stop talking and move on with the actual meeting.
You're not being reasonable.
I am feeling very reasonable, I gave everybody a chance to talk and to pose questions. This is our own hands, the answer is no, we cannot do that. The request has been forwarded to the county council as we are not the county council, thank you.
We need to.
I'm afraid there's no more time left, this is our answer.
All the details are contacting the county council. They've became our word, the leader of the county council and that's it. And then, you know, if you can do that for us, then.
The one shit that really messed up, they come to you.
Yes, oh exactly, Terry, please.
Can we go, can we shut it down?
I'm afraid any, any questions will have to be directed to me as the chair of the meeting. My fellow councillors last hour here to conduct the rest of the meeting. We will not enter into any further arguments as obviously it was just a bit more stress and anxiety on everybody. Of course, councils and public, which we should like to avoid if possible. And we all have opportunity to speak. I took questions and everybody's chance to talk, we will start with the official meeting now, thank you.
Terry, could you just answer that question? That's all possible.
All right. It's a sorry.
What about the twelve thousand three four written on the bill?
This is the, this is the. Absolutely, this is what our Feta Town Council is all about, absolute rubbish.
Thank you very much. Right, well done.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I have last silence from the public, please, so we can conduct the official meeting, thank you. Good evening. It is well into over past of 7pm after our open forum. We are now going to conduct the main of the meeting. Welcome everybody to the full town council meeting of the. Are we finished, thank you. All right, so. Let's make a start. Item 11924, declaration of the council to your interest, that I need to declare. If not, then if there's anything, yes.
Yeah, there's an agenda item about.
You just put the.
Sorry.
Sorry, council.
Can you do it? Is that, am I on? Sorry. There's an item later on regarding.
It is hard to hear, I can understand why the sound is coming to hear me. But if you can just.
Yeah, sorry.
That's why I.
There's an item later on about citizens' advice and.
Just a moment, I want, just a moment. We cannot hear each other, this is the main thing, after the public forum, only councillors get to speak during the meeting. Unfortunately, that's our rules. And if you want to attend the meeting. Sir, if you want to attend the meeting quietly, you're welcome to stay. If not, you're welcome to leave. Those are the options at the moment. This is the official meeting. If you call in, let's start, we have. If I start being browsing and interest clearing, I will stop the meeting and ask for you to be removed on the run.
Excuse me, excuse me, when I'm asking you questions, I'm asking a lot of things that are being said there. You have not given a shit, all you mean to do is to take all the time and you're all going like this frustration, I'm just a wonder. And now we're all saying to you, you have to hear each other, we can't be.
Shall I, shall I continue? Please do.
With any creature you come and give your.
I'm going to, I'm afraid, I'm going to, I'm going to. But you're going to deliver this out to spare with a little burden on this, thank you.
You're so proud of your.
Sorry, Ben, sorry, Ben. I suppose it could stand for election.
Should we talk about private on the third thing, you haven't replied back to the emails? Should we talk about this? What in the system when you come on your internet, you work out with the car, you just put the table? Yes. What in the system when you come here, sir? So just try and get them all there.
They won't give us that.
Obviously, just to say.
It's not going anywhere, it goes.
Oh, it's showing the public what's going on.
It's showing that public this very much. What is that, it's been a minute, I've been, that's representing us. Where, where? That's it. Oh, obviously, obviously, I'm not supporting the one who needs to be brought to the office.
And parallel discussions and a parallel meeting is to be taken outside of this official meeting can be restarted and conducted properly. If there's any other further discussion, you all can step outside your head then, so we can conduct your official meeting, thank you.
Yes. So I let you in this because it's a place to be, is anything coming back? Or it's to make sure you're in the system by airway, sir? Because it's, I don't know, obviously, it's a place for.
Sir, last warning, if you don't allow us to continue the meeting and if the public, there's no silence from the public, I will ask you to leave or be removed. Which I would really try to avoid. I don't want them to do that, but we do need to start our meeting and I need silence, please. I'll go in the old fashioned style then. As we need silence from the public, we are now in the official meeting. For me to restart the meeting, I will need silence from the public as the open forum is now finished. You have two options, sir. You can either stay and quietly attend our meeting, very welcome to do so. Or you can, you can leave and we can conduct a meeting and do the business of the council, which is why we are here for today, thank you.
So many questions, what have you informed us so much?
There's three minutes usually to take questions. You had, so you have plenty of time, I, I've listened, I've listened to you. I will not, I will not express. Unfortunately, it's time to be out, I will no longer interact with you. If you want to stay, you can, and if you want to leave, you can, thank you.
I don't represent it, when you want to send that sign, it's actually here what we've got to say. It's not going to be a good one, you're this, without us putting in the money in six, five, eight, you will be paid. Yeah.
Three more minutes and you can either be quiet or be removed, thank you.
Once in the fourth book, you had the answer, that's all the woman.
Simple question. When did the company get out? Never.
Yeah, if you don't speak on the.
Speak, yes, speak to the big signs. All the way down.
Just, I mean, you've been funded and you're getting quite a lot of money from, yeah.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, yeah, his trucks, his trucks were, you're talking to his rival system. But I mean, I've got a £12,000 worth of it in Britain wall, but she's just being informed of. And we've had a lot of other practice and it's been very interesting, it's been. Yeah.
I'm afraid. Thank you, everybody, I'm afraid the time is up. Sir, would you like to stay quiet or would you like to leave, please?
Just like to say, this council desperately needs some leadership. Now, we need to come from you as the deputy chair. It needs to come from the fellow who's standing as an MP. But somebody needs your sort of leadership, passive by the public and answer some questions. Because all the frustration is you not hiding any questions and not answering. You were a councillor.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you weren't wanting, because he speaks the truth.
Money is a voluntary problem with.
Mine. Can I ask everybody to be silent, please, so we can restart the meeting, thank you.
You well understand for election?
Well, we're going to have a very.
I did.
Sir, are you staying or are you leaving? I will restart the meeting.
Stopped, stopped.
Thank you very much.
It's all, it's all coming out in your lungs and a feeling that you can't accept the truth of all the information. And Terry, why do you have a board in your slot that day, mate? You had a lot of allegations for it, yeah, I'm really surprised with that. I mean, I know you've got bits important seen at the table right now, but it depends on today. But yeah, please you bring your slot of the night because I'd love to see it.
Absolutely.
So we can start getting legal, we're on way. Bye.
Thank you for your patience, guys, by the way.
All right, very decent gentlemen, fellow councillors, this was interesting. And we should make, restart now on the meeting, conduct the business? Okay, let's get on with the ten. We were on declarations, there were none as far as I'm concerned. Councilor, like one, please.
I do apologize.
Yes.
If these guys wanted to ask a question, would it be possible for them to ask a question now?
I can, I can understand the sympathy, but that is the fact that the particular group has all the time and has a need, other members of the public have a chance to talk. So we'll give them five minutes, we'll give, we'll give the chance to pose a quick question, each of the members and see if we can help them, they respect them.
Thank you.
We'll suspend the meeting now, let them have a word, have a question and we'll start then, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm here, George. I'm more religious, most you know, I rather like to watch record for thirty. Now, I've been in that council some months ago with concerns over the macrocarb was that parts of the ground stairs. And I've been there with service rooms. And my concern was in the evening, heaven forbid, the emergency services needing to get down here. By your dad, extremely difficult. And I don't know very much of being your jurisdiction.
Some water, Glenn, some water.
And yeah, solid question, I'll let the council, the final, ever go with answering, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Gordon, thanks for your question. This is a, a problem that comes across all the estates, not just where you are at the moment. And unfortunately, the police no longer do any policing of that kind of road incident as we might think it is. It purely comes down to highways, unfortunately. So that's, that's a highways issue. And what we've asked for in the past is for more signage, more road markings, but actually it makes no difference. Because unless there's somebody to make sure that they adhere to those. Because unless there's somebody to make sure that they adhere to those signs or new information, that it means nothing. So it's not a police issue, it's highways. And the only way to get to this is by keep going on about complaining about a particular problem. So if we sorted your problem out in Norfolk, I'm sure there'll be a problem over on either Cloverfield or somewhere else. There's lots of green spaces where people are parking and actually, they're obstructing views and parking on corners. It doesn't seem to be a problem anymore. We raise it as often as we can with stag, as you know. Whenever this council meets with any higher bodies, we always get the highways engineer and have a go at him about it. But he's got this same problem across Norfolk. So my answer to your question is, be the squeaky wheel, complain and complain to highways as much as you can. We'll support you in any way we can, but our powers are limited. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions then for remaining members of the public? No? All right, thank you very much for that. We'll then restart the official meeting. So we were at item 120, apologies for absences and any apologies. That's quite a few. Thank you for that. I noted. We'll move on to the item 121, the minutes. To confirm the minutes of full council meeting. It's held on the 28th of May. To be confirmed, there's two records. We've time in this script by my name, but it's to basically agree on the questions and meetings. Is everybody in agreement with the previous meetings?
Agreed.
Yeah, thank you.
Cunia interests.
Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I am paid by citizens' advice. I have many, many years with the CAB and when we discuss that later on, I do have an interest.
Okay, noted. That's, thank you. Right, so we're going to move on to the previous committee minutes received. So the Community Environmental Services meeting on the 4th of June 24 to be presented by Councillor Land, I believe. The Councillor Land has presented the flagrant right to meet the environmental services meeting. No?
Um, are you asking me to present the committee minutes? Yes.
Or to request them to be moved? If you want to present the meetings or if anyone of your committee can do it?
Thank you, I'm happy to present the minutes for the previous year. For the 4th of June 24, repelling items from 63 to 24, the 64 to 24. As Chair, move the minutes. Okay.
One more minutes. Everybody in agreement? Oh, wait, there's a recommendation, sorry. You're getting behind the place. So recommendation, we will need the proposal then in a second for the recommendation. We have a proposal. That's a question. Councillor Land, we have a second then. Do you know me? Everybody in favour? That's passed. Thank you. Now, moving on to the planning meeting, minutes for the planning meeting on the 11th of June. Presented by, okay, so we have an issue. I believe that usual share of that meeting wasn't present. There was a few people attending. Is there anybody that attended the planning last planning meeting that would like to possess minutes? Councillor Stair, yeah, thank you. That's my recommendation. So it's all resolved business there?
No, no.
And the recommendation?
I'm sure the paperwork is here, sorry, my apologies. Okay, so the recommendation was from 1824. The revised committee terms of reference to be approved at full council, this council. So we need a proposal for that. Councillor Blackmore, in a second then. Councillor Blackmore as well, in favour? Approved, thank you. So next meeting minutes, Heritage Events Committee. There is also a recommendation. Okay, Madam, not before, a minute please. It was from the 12th of June and it is to be shared by Councillor Blackmore.
I recommend the meetings of the Heritage Events Committee that was held on the 12th of June, items 8124 through to 9824.
Need a proposal? Anyone proposal? Councillor Peters, second one, Councillor McDonald, all in favour? Approved. That's approved. Right, so. So the next one is the minutes for the Corporate Services Committee. This was on the 18th of June.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'd like to move the minutes from the Corporate Services Committee held on the 18th of June. There are three recommendations to move. The first one is to recommend that the revised committee terms of reference be approved at full council. And just for benefit of newer councillors and for members of the public, we reduced our committee structure recently. So all of the main committees are looking at their terms of reference and revising them, but they are required to present them to full council, which is why this is the third, a free lunch of terms of reference you've heard this evening. Once they're adopted, you won't hear them again. But the terms of reference are in the pack for the meeting, so you can see what committee is responsible for what council service. I am the Chair of the Corporate Services Committee and under item 21 stroke 84, I'd like to move that the committee terms of reference be approved.
Right, need a proposal for that?
I'm happy to propose.
Second, Councillor Blackmore, all in favour? Approved, that's passed. Thank you.
The second recommendation is item 107 and that is a schedule of reserves. Obviously, council holds reserves for a number of different purposes, some of which have been used over the last financial year and we have added to reserves in other cases. And we are required to hand you the note that schedule of reserves and it has to be approved by full council. So item 107 deals with a schedule of reserves. And I'd like to, the Corporate Services Committee agreed that we would like to recommend that to full council for approval.
Very well. A proposal for this item, please. Also, a second, Councillor Land, is final in favour? Thank you. That's noted.
And the third recommendation from Corporate Services is item 106 and that deals with bad debts. Obviously, we've just come past the end of the financial year and the start of them busy preparing their accounts for the year. There have been some bad debts incurred. They won't. I don't think the majority, the majority of them were incurred the previous financial year, but we've dealt with them in these accounts, have exhausted all options to recover that money. I'm pleased to say there is only £4,421. We are required to note that at full council. So again, I would like to move that the bad debts be noted as paid in the report for item 106.
Very well. Do we have a proposal for that? Councillor Peters, in a second, please. Councillor Stair, all in favour? That's passed, thank you.
There's no further recommendations. I'd like to move the minutes.
Move minutes then. All in favour? Good, thank you. That's moved. Fine, so. I move on to item 123 slash 24. Mayor's remarks and report, right. Our mayor of the day, Mr Chris, Councillor Harvey is not here at the moment. I'm sure he has plenty to mention in regards to this. When it comes to some of the items in the events that have been substituting the mayors for the past week, this is the way at the moment. I didn't prepare a report as per se. I want to say that it's just with a few meetings, a few items that I attended, particularly in RAF Honiton, they had a change of command, which was very interesting. They get an awesome display of train dogs, sleeve, all sorts of things. And they make put on a display for everyone, it's really interesting. I attended on behalf of the mayor also the change of command and celebrations, celebrations that RAF do in it. Very interesting as well, although quite loud. There was a lot, there was a lot of movement with all the jets. Yes, the pilots were not going above, so it was a loud environment. It was well attended. There was a lot of dignitaries and members from all all streams of command and local authority, local institutions. So it was a really large group of people, it was really well organised and everything went really well. It was really good to have, I mean, you know, first time in an event where we sit and we face immitally the, the planes, the jets in the background as the whole event was organized, one of the nine others. So that was news to me. And never, ever did we, did I ride the bus where he had to stop in a traffic sign to let the jet fly first. So that was a first. It's quite an interesting event. I also attended last Saturday, a small event where there was a fundraiser for hearing dogs for deaf people who were trying to understand for their cause. They do a lot of work, we know, to help support their beneficiaries. That is one thing I've learned is that to get a hearing dog trained in the bed, passed on to someone, it is not only highly costly, but from like, from a dog's 45k. And we did £25,000 just to get a dog to start from up to be trained to support one of the beneficiaries. And apparently, the no way they can support women that we are for, that is not the of the comments of the fundraiser, the whole thing, and sales house. But it is important that they could play a little bit, mentioned, but it didn't matter because of the cost of the rest. So that's from me, from events I've attended, it's on behalf of the mayor in this month so far. We'll be more next week, I'm sure, and I hope hearing all of it next time, so. That's all for me. So. I'm sure, I'm sure our mayor will work on what he is, that in the meeting on their, on their, on their side, so that's not an issue. So move on, item 124 to 24. Report from the board of the Stanley Fort Charity. To receive a report from the board of Stanley Fort Charity. And a bit on this one was Councillor White. It was to note in the report, I don't think there's any particular actions, if I'm right.
Deputy Mayor, the meeting that was supposed to be held last week was postponed.
Right.
So the resolution that would be, would be turned, that this particular meeting will be turned at the next meeting.
All right, so we'll be dealing with that on the next meeting then. Thank you for that. So we'll move on to item 125 slash 24. Some council representatives and other bodies to receive and to note any reports from councils in other bodies. Of this. Should we, I'm making it easy, go around the table and see if there's any reports? And we'll start on this, so Councillor Jeremy, do you want?
Yes, my Chair. Just one blanket on stag and it's really to note that the police snap meetings. The next one is for Thetford and that's on the 19th of August in this room. So that's, that's the first one back in its rightful place as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Land, no?
Thank you. I continue to act as Chair of the Avi Action Group with working hard to assist regeneration, staying, skin, no threats disrupt so many lives on the Avi estate. Another meeting was held and well attended. Guests included the Thetford Mayor with not one but two southwest Norfolk general election candidates present. Now outlined by the commissioners, it's sought by developers. We have embarked on a campaign of writing objection letters with around, I believe, well over 100 letters launched so far.
Thank you, Councillor White. Any, any other reports to note? No, that's all. Okay, so we'll move, move on then. It's to item 126 slash 24. Reports from county, district councils. I believe we went around the room, so if there's none, we'll move along as well. Item 127 24. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Councillor Jeremy. I just assumed that you were going to report as we went around the table, so my apologies. Go, go right there.
Well, I'm only on one outside body for the town council. And so I always defer to Max.
Oh, fair point, okay. Right, okay.
I'll do my county and Breckford one separately.
Sure.
And I've only got a couple of things to report. Firstly, just to say, and I'm sure I'm not the only one in the room who is completely fed up with Norfolk County Council's approach to grass cutting, weed spraying and shredding of litter over the past week. And you're actually able to drive around town at the moment and notice which pieces of land are Norfolk County Council owned because I can guarantee that they are the ones with the highest grass. And it's been completely a businessless service this year and they're incredibly behind as a result. And they are whizzing around, cutting grass sporadically, not doing it particularly well, leaving large chunks of grass poking up, not a lot of strimming. And because they're behind, there's no fork given to what may be in the grass. So they are shredding grass, they are shredding hands and it's completeness. I wrote to Norfolk County Council last week to outline my frustration, highlighting to them that we have over gardens this Sunday, they're just gone. Lots of people visiting the town. We have the annual area of judges due to visit in July. We have the Bunja Festival in July where we welcome hundreds of people from elsewhere. And frankly, Norfolk County Council are letting the town down. I made that point clear to them and what I've also asked for is their complaints procedure because I also asked them how many complaints they'd actually received from Thetford residents. And it was zero. People are complaining to me and they are complaining to Thetford Town Council, but they are not complaining to Norfolk County Council. And if they are, it's certainly not being registered in any form or way. I think it would be really helpful if we could encourage people to complain directly to Norfolk. It's not entirely their fault. There have been budget cuts and we are now reduced to just two grass cuts per year. We're reduced to just one weed spray per year. That's all we are actually allowed. And they are cuts that I did not support as a county councillor, but they were approved. But I do think we need to be registering our unhappiness with this as a, as a town. And so I would like to share those contact details. And I will say that our own town council staff and the in blue volunteers, particularly on Friday mornings, are doing a fantastic job removing weeds around the town. It's not our responsibility as a town council, but our staff are paid to do that using our funds and, you know, townsfolk are volunteering their time to do that. One particular area over the last few weeks, London Road near the bus station and the back of Painter Street, some of those weeds were awful too. The tackling that was in the last fortnight made a tremendous difference. But we are committed in one, money for the town council, but also time of the volunteers, so we really need the support of Norfolk. And Breckford aren't completely wonderful when it comes to this. Their, their grass areas are better than Norfolk's, but not great. So I think we need to continue to apply pressure there. But I can honestly say our responsibility as a town council, the land that we own, is kept to a very high standard. We are not responsible for highways, for public open spaces, not in our control. So we need a town council to make clear to people who is responsible for what. And I know it's difficult because people think you're passing the buck. But we cannot tackle all of the problems in the town. We are just a town council. Ran over on that one. The only other thing I wanted to mention was Breckford Council. I had reason this week, within the last week, to make a referral for a young lady that was fleeing domestic abuse. Breckford Council still has tremendous support available for people that are fleeing abuse or have lost their job or for whatever reason are financially struggling. Councillors are able to make referrals to that scheme and they could be supported with up to £300 for essentials like gas and electricity or in this case furniture that the person involved had to get a new property very quickly and that is expensive. And so there was support given. I wanted to applaud for that because there was a big publicity at the beginning of the year too when that scheme was coming to an end at the end of March. It was extended for six months. It is still there. But they have seen a significant drop in the number of people applying because people think it has finished. It is still there and it will be there for the next few months. And if Breckford Council don't use it, then it goes back to the government. Please do. There are people in the town struggling. It's called households support fund, but talk to any of your Breckford councillors and I'm sure they will be happy to assist. Thank you.
For a moment, I thought I broke it. Thanks for that, Councillor Jeremy. I have to, I have to agree. It is very difficult for people to understand when they have two patches of grass, one beside the other, without a physical border between, to understand who's responsible for what in town and it gets really confusing. So it, I agree, I think. Do you have any suggestion about how we're going to make the public more aware about those areas?
Yeah, I think we should be certainly recording it in the minutes, but I would encourage our councillors to use our social media to promote the official complaints process for all the county councils.
Thank you. Right, so if there's no more reports then, if that's it. Councillor Land, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carla.
Thank you, thank you Carla. I'm sort of echoing what Terry said here a bit, because I continue to help local residents by signing off substantial numbers of fuel bank vouchers and applications for household support referrals with Breckford. It's noticeable to me, as I say, I'm echoing Councilor Jeremy, that the numbers that we're getting are reducing, however, the awfulness, I can't think of a better word, of the cases, of the individual cases, is just going off the scale. People are really desperate needs, so please, anybody gets casework or something troubled, please get in touch with either Terry or me, or whoever, and we'll try to do our best to, to help. Thank you.
I fully support that, from Councilor Jeremy's point, that the funds are there to be used by people that need them, and if people don't, is not aware of them, they end up going back when they could be useful for doing some good in town, for people that are really in this trouble. And I think we should make them aware as best as we can, so I fully agree on that, thank you. But I believe that's all from the reports then, county councils and districts. So, moving on, so item one twenty-seven slash twenty-four, approval of annual governance statements, the AGS. It's to review the AGS, will be included in council's annual governance and accountability report, the AICAR, for the, for the year ending thirty-first of March twenty-four, and the decision requires approval of the AGS, as recommended by the Corporate Services Committee. I believe Councilor Terry, Jeremy, a bit later on, or our town clerk, our town clerk can do it as well, either one of them, thank you.
Thank you very much. In terms of legislation, the town council is required to prepare an annual governance statement, which basically says there's a whole lot of assertions that relate to various elements of governance, and the full council are asked to answer, yes, have they complied with those assertions and met the issues within them, or have they, no, is there work to be done? What we've done as a council, we've developed an internal control review mechanism, where we go to all the assertions, a subcommittee is formed from the Corporate Services Committee, and that committee has appointed three members, three councillors, councillor Bresser, councillor Wright, and councillor Land. Fortunately, we couldn't get all three councils together, but they went through their template, and their recommendation to this particular council minister, which take it to that particular minute of that meeting, included in the information pack, and that recommendation from the, from the three councillors or two councillors, was that this council approve the annual general, sorry, annual governance statement.
So, is there any questions in regards to the, to the report and to the reactions taken to, you know, taking account of transparency and to make the process a bit more clear? Like, like Clive mentioned, where I was one who had the very option to look through the paperwork of another council, another councillor, and I think the process is quite transparent, it's good to be getting independent people to look at those items and really go through them. Should we be, so there's any questions raised by any, by another agency, we're able to show them their own steps or take into action, and all the, I'm just, this is the process in order. Any questions or comments, please? In these cases, I shall ask for a proposal for the, for this item then, we have a proposal. Councilor Jeremy, in a second, please. Councilor Blackwood, Holly Faber, thank you, that's passed. Right, so item one twenty-eight slash twenty-four, oh, sorry, I just found that one. Later, one twenty-seven, which is one, one twenty-eight slash twenty-four, approval of the annual accounting statement. To review the annual accounting statement, that will be included in council's annual governance and accountability report, the AICAR, for the year ending thirty-first of March twenty-four. So to approve the annual accounting statement, recommended by the Corporate Services Committee. I believe that's also, Councilor Jeremy, you're the acting clerk, I'll let, I'll take this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Every year we are required to prepare an annual governance accountability return, that's based on the accounting records, has very unique accounting standards, and what we've done this particular year, we've prepared the statement on the same basis as we have done in previous years. As the responsible finance officer, I actually certify that this information is correct, and I tabled it to this particular meeting, so that the council can have some oversight and get the assurance that what we've actually done is, is appropriate. So I've recommended this statement to the, to the meeting to be considered.
So, we have a proposal, we have, any comments, Councilor Land?
I would just say a big thank you to the acting town clerk, always hard work and diligence, I believe so, thank you very much.
No, didn't support it, he indeed put a lot of time into it, has went well, and checked the documents, it is quite extensive, so this, I would imagine a lot of hours, so, you know, we'll pass our thanks on that. Any more comments on that? Now, should we get a proposal then for that point? Any proposals? Councilor Peters, seconders? Councilor McDonald, Ellie Faber? Right, that's passed, thank you. Item one twenty-nine slash twenty-four, so it's a contribution to Citizens Advice Bureau, and I will let Councilor Jeremy, which is the proposer for this point in the agenda, to lead on this, but it is to discuss financial support to be provided in the CAB for the City of Anadis and in Tesco, that was included in the final approved budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. Councilor Jeremy?
Thank you. Can I just check first, Madam Deputy Mayor, town clerk, Councilor Blackwood has a pecuniary interest because he's an employee of Citizens Advice Bureau, so he probably should leave the room while we debate this item. Sounds reasonable?
If it's registered, he doesn't have to leave, if it's not registered, he'd have to leave.
So, okay, so. I assume Councilor Blackwood, he's on your registered interest, so he's.
And I've mentioned at the beginning.
So it can just die, okay, that's fine, thank you.
I just wanted to check.
No, that's fine.
So this relates to something that was very clearly and clear in the manifesto that many of us stood on, and we as Thetford Town Council unanimously adopted the content of that manifesto last year. I've been a long supporter of Citizens Advice Bureau, and I must confess, my influence, originally I thought it was a core service funded by the government or by local councils. It's, it's a charity in its own right, and it absolutely relies on ground funding or fundraising activities. Citizens Advice are often the first call of call for people when they want fair, independently and impartial advice, and I think they do a tremendous service. And what we are looking to do as a town council is to fund an additional member of staff for the Citizens Advice Bureau, solely based in Thetford, to support people with particular benefits and welfare advice. And I don't know the statistics off the top of my head, but around the UK, millions and millions of pounds' worth of benefits that people are legally entitled to are not claimed, and that is the case in Thetford, I have people approaching me as a councillor on a routine basis, saying they need support with ESA applications, pension credit, attendance allowance, personal independence payments. And that is money that people are not claiming and not spending in the local economy, so I see this very much as an item about investment in people, in the town, but also investment in the local economy. And in the proposal from the Citizens Advice, their calculation is that for the thirty thousand pounds that we will give them, they will bring in an additional three hundred thousand pounds of unclaimed benefits. That's a significant return on our investment, and ordinarily, that is money that is needed and what we spend locally, which I think is important, it has a double benefit. It's something that we budgeted for in the local, in the budget that we adopted earlier this year, so it is budgeted for, we just need to approve tonight the principle of how it's going to work, and to delegate the appropriate decisions around monitoring tools and reporting. We will, we will require Citizens Advice to report back to this council on a regular basis, how many people they are working with, how much additional money they are bringing in, and generally how the project is going. In my discussions with them, I impressed upon them the need to ensure that this service is available for the whole of Thetford. I am very keen to see some kind of drop in services in places like Plumfield and to the north of Thetford, it needs to be spread around the town so that people have fair, equal access to it, and we've had some early discussions about how we can facilitate that. And the decision that's required is on the paper, and I would welcome any comments or questions from the ladies.
Thank you, Councilor Jeremy, I know there's quite some comments around there, but briefly going to mention that I particularly don't have a clear and not clear interest with CAB or CATT, as it is, desperate in this branch, but I am familiar with the, with the system, because I have volunteered there for a while, and somewhat in the books personally, I'm still registered with them, I'm just not actively volunteered this year because of other engagement responsibilities, but I've always been a big supporter of Citizens Advice, I know very well the work they do, so I'm familiar with their processes, and they do have systems in place to report, to report, and the number, you know, the daily for the people they're helping, so that's, that's, it should be fairly easy for them to, to supply once they have a person in place. I do agree that scattering the, the help around the different points of test for is helpful, so people feel that they be helped locally, without having, you know, long distances, they feel that the helps come to them rather than them going to the help, so that's beneficial as well. But that's just from me, as I, I love them well, and I'm obviously a great connection, and I'm very enthusiastic for the work they do, because they do help a lot of people. I'll go on the table for comments. Councilor Peters?
I feel quite passionate about us doing this. Twenty-five years ago, I was in a very bad way with debt, and I didn't know how to manage. If it hadn't been awful, the advice I offered Citizens Advice Bureau, and one gentleman in particular, I probably wouldn't be around today. I was simply off my house, I watched my family, I was forever near and dear, and if we can help in a small way, that will help others, they help me, and I think it's something we have to do, as it said was in the manifesto, the only, the heart of things, and it is in the report that Councilor Jeremy gave quite adequately, we've been looking to make sure, it's taken badly, we've been looking to make sure that if we're funding that, that it is actually Thetford, that is, Thetford residents that do it, but for everyone else, every other council, I think it's quite important thing, one passion that we need to support.
Thank you, Councilor Peters, anybody who wants to make a comment? Councilor Blackwood?
I'll speak on this.
Yes, you may, you may be able to give your opinion, yes.
Okay. I have over twenty-five years of the CAB, the performance of Thetford and this is not brilliant, and there's a lot of staff leaving, the quality of advice is not brilliant. When this was proposed, it's welfare rights, increasing the amount of income through the benefits that Telly has brought up. The way that CAB, this and Thetford, propose this, it's a generalist advisor, and the reporting is not as good as I would like it. I'm happy, delighted that we're going to do it, but I want it to be specifically welfare rights, and I want it to be supporting the frontline advisors, because the frontline advisors are the keystone of the service, not a specialist advisor like me, who would go and sit somewhere in an outreach session for two, three, four hours and not see anybody, that's a complete waste of resource. It has to be managed properly, and I would like to have the time and sit around with Terry, Councilor Jeremy, and anybody else, and put the proposal together. It needs monitoring, it needs handling properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Blackwood, I agree, I think, well, if we do get approved, you know, I'm still going to take some comments and we'll make a decision, but if we prove this, I'm of the opinion personally that it is in our gift to decide what's the remit of the work they do. Obviously, if we're gonna pay for the member of staff to do the work in Tesco, it will have to be in Tesco, it's up to us to define what the framework of their work will be as we are the entity that's going to be sponsoring, it's going to be funding that, that person in my opinion, but any more comments, please? Councilor McDonald?
Deputy Mayor, I think this is, this is a great plan to do something for Thetford that's a, a real tangible benefit for us. My question, and I gather thirty thousand pound, is, is that a one-off this year payment? Is that going to be next year as well, and is it going to be rolling? So, I just need to understand that, but I'm not fully behind anything we do along these lines. Thank you.
Councilor McDonald, very good question, as I don't have the information, for how long will this support last? I think I'll take this back to Councilor Jeremy, so how this is proposed, that this can go for how long?
It's a year with the opportunity to renew, so ultimately the power in the rest with us, if he's not open-ended, it's, it's for a limited time only, but if it's working well and we can afford it, we have the power to renew.
Thank you. Any more comments? Councilor Land?
Thank you. I've been looking at a few statistics around the primary ward in Thetford that I represent at this council, all taken in twenty-twenty, and would, I suggest, be significantly worse now. Seventeen percent of households in my ward are in fuel poverty, that figure may well be higher now, as I say, and indicates households for whom built fuel bills mean their leftover residual income below the poverty line. Source for that is the BEIS. In addition, twenty-five percent or a quarter of families with children live on or below the poverty line. Source for that is the Department of Work pensions. According to indices of multiple deprivation, twenty-five percent of households in my ward, in the primary ward, are in the most deprived percent of the entire country. The source for that is the MHCLG. So, not only is this a manifesto page, but a full-time caseworker could reasonably be expected, as Councilor Jeremy laid out, to pump hundreds of thousands of pounds into a desperately catched-out town. For that reason alone, I support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Land, any more comments on the table? Councilor Blackwood?
Yeah, if we're going to do this well, the project should be really looked at over a number of years. You don't get good benefit advisors straight off the street, a project doesn't start and is productive on day one, it will take months to come through. Benefit cases can take six months, nine months to go to appeal, as you well know. This project should be planned for the lifetime of us, with the option of renewing at the end of the period, and if we are going to do it, I think we need to commit to the period of us, but with strict monitoring. I really don't want to see us say, we're going to do it for a year, because what happens at the end of the year, when appeal has not come to court, Thetford and this do not do mandatory, you know about it, Thetford and this do not do mandatory reconsiderations with benefit refusals, they do not do appeals. It takes months to a year to come through, we need to do it properly or not bother. Thank you.
I don't disagree, Councilor Blackwood, I think it is this done properly, and this got it so much ability to it. So, we have the proposal, as it stands, for the thirty K towards an advisor for a year, as from, as per Councilor Jeremy's proposal, is there any suggestions to make any amendments to that, or is there a, the proposal as we should vote on it now? We should make a decision now for the first year, for the first thirty K, and is there any suggestion how we're gonna go on when defining exactly what the structure and the framework of how that works is gonna be done? Obviously, this conversation needs to be done, needs to be had with Citizens Advice Bureau, they know their staff, they know what the potential for, for the services, and it's gonna be some way to do the collaboration, negotiation with them, they have the services, we'll have the funding. Yes, Councilor Blackwood?
Okay, I'd like to suggest an amendment then, please, and in principle, change the wording to welfare rights caseworker, and with a funding of a three-year period, with the option to renew after a year if they are not meeting the criteria, rather than one year and we can renew, three years if they're not meeting it, then we stop it. can renew, three years if they're not meeting it, then we stop it.
Thank you. I'll listen to Councilor Peters before we go back on that amendment, please.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I really do. And there is a great deal for the, the bits and stuff and that. But I would like to shut out. I'm fully aware there is a debt problem as well in this town. And I want that to be included in the bill as well. Because it is ungood us giving people all the welfare benefits if they still got the debts. I mean, that's right.
I'll take Councilor Land's, a very brief comment. It is, there are, there's a big remit of support, as the welfare benefits, as the debt and support with that, from knowing that the work that citizens does, is that there are, there's a degree of specialty of knowledge that goes into each one of those areas. And often advisors, either are generalist advisors and they just, you know, attend public and try to guide them on the right direction, assign those them to other agencies. They don't do mandatory considerations, et cetera, which is the appeals, which is a next level of more complexity with the cases. So it's a very initial sort of help on the ground to, you know, set them on track, to get further help down the line if they need it. But for example, debt is very specific. Usually they have a debt advisor, Joshua, in their area alone. So I understand that whilst we want to be inclusive, my concern is how far would an advisor, a thirty K would take us? And how are we going to be able to accommodate all of that in one single advisor? Because it requires a person with a large, large skills, a man personal on it. That's sometimes hard to find, even for the Citizens Advice Bureau themselves. But, Councilor Land, please.
Thank you. I think we're in a danger here of making perfect the enemy of good. We need to get on with this. We need to get on with it now. I don't support Councilor McMon's amendment.
Should we vote on the primary proposal as it was? Thirty K?
We need a second for the amendment first.
Okay, so we have a proposal for the amendment. Councilor McMon, a second for the amendment, then, if there's any. Is there any second for the amendment? No? Okay, so we will retract to the initial proposal, which is Councilor Sharn's proposal.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to move that we approve the contribution of thirty thousand pounds to the C A B for a Thetford-based advisor to delegate development of appropriate monitoring tools and reports to the Chair of Corpus Services and the acting town clerk.
Okay, so we have a proposal. Is there a second for that, please? Councilor Land, those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Against?
I'm against.
Any abstentions? No? Well, let's pass. Thank you. And we can move on to item one thirty slash twenty-four. It's response to the appointment of Chair of Thetford Town Board. And this was, uh, taken by Councilor Peters, is discussing the response of Thetford Town Council to the appointment of Chair of Thetford Town Board, which establishes fact that long-term funding will... And Councilor Peters suggests that to have a consideration whether or not to raise an objection to the appointment of the current chosen option. Councilor Peters.
Chair, please bear with me. I'm not a supplier at the most, so I'm reading from my notice this morning. Some of mine will be grammatically destroyed.
Not a problem. Take your turn.
I'm gonna read what I've got. I, and I know the Thetford Town Council were very big at the Thetford Town Fund and the possible initiative it brings. Coming at a time when we have a need to improve our town for its community and also when we have a rich town market, I felt it was a great opportunity. At its inception, I voiced my concerns about how the board could be made up. My words were, I am concerned that this project could be hijacked by Breckland and that it would be like its predecessors where Thetford Representative would be a token and we would get what Breckland wants voiced in on to us. I was given assurance at that meeting that this would not be the case. The board would be Thetford-centric and set up in consultation with Thetford Town Council. Government dictate was that the Chair would be independent. I really support that and I think it's an important opportunity to bring everyone together. I thought Breckland was missing that opportunity. At the second meeting we had, I again was given that assurance. This was gonna be a non-political Thetford through and through. That was the words of the President and Guy Provenant. Again, after that assurance, I thought, okay, that is fine. Suggestions forward for the Chair for that committee and I was fully on board with the process. Roll another few weeks and I've nothing but to support the word process. Despite being told this board is not political, it's been used in the media for exactly that. It's an opportunity for someone to promote themselves, not Thetford. To my knowledge, there's been at least two occasions that the board has been used to advance its political position. More widely is that it's been reported in the press that the Chair of the Board has been appointed. Once the Chair made a very candid decision, it was decided and declared without a single word to or in consultation of Thetford Town Councils. How many more people have been appointed to this board with no knowledge with Thetford Town Council? Um, I wasn't playing that game. It seems a record of not learned lessons from previous boards and committees. We are the locally elected representatives of Thetford and we need to be involved. Consulted and included. I understand that the time, it's a time critical with the project and that we all want the improvements that it will bring. But I do not believe that the way that this has gone today is acceptable to us as a council, certainly isn't to me, or by the community we serve. With this in mind, I ask the Council to put on record that we are far from happy that once again the promise of inclusion from the town and its community is not being met and we expect this to improve. I propose a strongly worded letter outlining our unhappiness with the process that there is today and to further Chair of the Board and also other members that we have not been consulted and we owe full consultation and inclusion in the process if this project is to be performed.
Thank you, Councilor Peters. So can you just very briefly summarize, rephrase the proposal as it is so we can proceed, please? The proposal, recommendation, how would you like to word it, please?
As I said, I'm not the most liberal person.
Okay. So in the, from my notes, the decision required is to consider whether or not to raise an objection to the appointment. And this is in relation to the chosen person to the Thetford Town Board. Is that, is that the recommendation, the proposal as you?
Based on what's happened inside the objective process that we've had, we've had, we've had a Chair voiced in on us. He may be a very good Chair, who knows? No one's had the chance to discuss it. And I think as council, we need to let Breckland know that we're not happy with this. And I hope that others can support that, because I certainly have what's, what's going on. I suppose we get a letter drafted. I'm afraid I'm not going to draft a letter that Breckland would take much notice of. I would ask that someone could do that for me.
Okay, so the proposal is to have a letter drafted, objecting to the option, to the choice?
Yeah. I'm objecting to the fact that we've been sidelined, not been consulted. And we demand, we...
Mandatory transparency and consultation for every...
We were sold of separate entry. We were sold it's not legal. Quite happy with that. But if you're gonna be included, you include us.
Okay. So we are recommendation to write a letter to Breckland Council stating this stage is not being consulted for the appointment of the new leader of the board for this, for this business board. Do you, should we include that you object to the choice or you just object to the fact that the council is not consulted on it?
I can't possibly object to the choice when I've not had the chance to discuss it. I don't know the man. And I don't know anyone else. I know the names around, but I'm seeing paper. Who's expected to be a really nice man? But as we know, we've not had the chance to discuss it. We've not had the chance to meet him.
Fair point.
It's supposed to be around Thetford, surely.
Understood, understood. Councilor Land?
Thank you very much. When we met on the subject, the single, the one occasion we met with council, as the town council were told by a senior Breckland representative, we would be at the heart of all decision-making around the twenty minute bar. Yet here we are, excluded from the very first decision made. It both required ill for any further consultation around the makeup of the board. Further to, um, Councilor Peters' really good statement, I would observe that not only were no town councillors consulted, neither were any of the eight Breckland councillors from Thetford consulted. We were cut right out of the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Brindon?
Thank you very much. Um, the, the concern I have is to do with the way in which sheer accident makes a huge difference to the way in which these, this issue is being dealt with. The accident is an accident of size. Many places around England are being given similar support. If they are a little bit bigger than Thetford, they are themselves district councillors. And they are able therefore to make the kind of decision that we think we should have the power to make and which has been so eloquently explained by previous councillors. Because we are a little bit too small to be a district councillor, somebody else happens to be thirty miles away, makes all the decisions for us. I must regret that as nothing much we can do about it. I'm particularly sorry that Breckland Council does not appear, I hope I'm wrong, to be interested in making up for this problem by allowing Thetford Town Council a significant, a significant voice in how this should be managed. It's very regretful. It's, it's partly the way the system has been set up, but it could have been so much easier if Breckland had been supportive of Thetford.
Thank you, Councilor Brindon. Councilor Jeremy?
Thank you. And Vicky, you're absolutely fine. Don't worry with your writing. I fully support this item. At the, I'm gonna rehash a few points, I'm sorry. We were assured at the previous meeting transparency and partnership working. This is a really big opportunity which will only be successful if we work together. Trust and respect are an important part of that. And due to previous regeneration projects, this is sadly lacking. We are all elected by Thetford residents. It's important that Breckland take proper account of our views, not just as town councillors, but as Breckland councillors as well. It is imperative that Breckland Council upholds the promise that they made us in the meeting in the beginning to us regarding transparency and involvement in that area, please, sir.
Thank you. Any more comments? Councilor McDonald?
Thank you. Um, Mike informed me there was an apostrophe missing. Thank you to you. I, I fully agree with the fact that I don't think we've been consulted as best as possible. But I think we've probably heard what we wanted to hear out of that meeting. So things like Thetford-centric, at the heart, partnership and transparency were all mentioned. It was also mentioned by Tom Chapman Allen that he would make that decision and make sure it was a Thetford person doing it. He made that very, very clear. He also said that we are under a very strict timeline and he didn't have time to mess around and go into lots of other detail. My concern is, whilst I agree with everything you've said, it would be nice if we were kept in the loop. Mike's right. It, it is actually a Breckland oversight. And I fear that if we just rail against these things all the time, we will end up looking petulant. Actually, we want the money. We want the money to come to us. We need to look like we really want it, desperately want it, and be involved. What we don't want to do from the outset is just say, it's not fair. We don't think that was right. We're not in favor of the person or the process. The process was explained to us quite clearly. It is a process that is forced on Breckland as much as it is any other county that gets the money. So I agree. I wish it had been clearer. I wish more Thetford had been involved, particularly this council. But it is as it is and we should engage and warmly accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Peters. And can I make a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that in lots of ways. We do want the money. It is important. But I'm not gonna run over on the benefit holders just because they think that's the way they wanna do it. If they say you are included, it is transparent, it is Thetford-centric, that's how it should be. I'm not saying that we wanna do anything that would be a daily age, um, getting the treatment here. And I'm not saying anything at all against the individual that they've appointed. I deliberately left that out because I don't know them. But I can't sit here and say, oh, well, let's, you know, let's just, I'm happy with that because we're still getting the money. Uh, I'm sorry, that. Too many projects in this town have gone that same way where we're still getting the money and say, don't worry about that, you know? And it's not gone where it's needed, where we'd like. There's lots of stuff that we've got on our master plan, you know? Where, where does Thetford get safety? And that's why I'm not happy with having done it. If they come to us and said, this is the dialogue of God, they haven't tried to go anywhere else, I might have been a little bit more pissed because, okay, maybe by this shit and that introduced the guy to us, whatever. But none of that's happened. We'd be totally sidelined. And I don't like that. And, and I don't, I don't want to lose money because I think it's important that we keep it. But we can't just let it roll and then they go. And I just follow that simple bit there. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Peters. So as it stands, we have a proposal to write a letter to Breckland Council stating that we are not pleased with how the process has been acted with like more transparency in their choices or at least to be notified. Is that correct? That the wording that we require? Okay. So would you have a proposal for that? Sorry, Councilor McDonald?
I just think it's an opportunity for us to say that we are fully engaged. We're really pleased we've got this money. And we'd like to be more involved in the future.
You can certainly order that way.
I think it's really important we start this off in a positive manner. Imagine that town individual who's gonna be chairing that, if he thinks there's distrust right from the offset, that's gonna already start the ball before we've even started the game in a difficult space. So I agree. But let's put something in there that says, we're engaged. We wanna be further, better involved in the future, please.
Point taken. And I agree that Councilor Peters did make a point. This is nothing specific about individual, but they're chosen for the post at all, as we're not familiar with the person. This is really just the lack of transparency and the fact that we weren't notified, if I understood well. Okay. We can certainly work the things to include the fact that we are pleased with the funding. We're looking forward to working with them. Councilor Jeremy?
Yeah, I just kinda had a, Matt raised an important point about process there. And if I can suggest that the most appropriate person for the letter to come from would be the mayor. And he's ultimately the person whose signature will be on the bottom of this. So if he's happy with this addition, I would suggest that we delegate the task of writing the letter to the mayor and Councilor Peters, who's tabled the item. And I fully trust them to get the tone of the letter right.
I think we can certainly do that. I'm still in support of the mayor, but we can certainly put him in power with what's, what's been discussed. And I'm sure he'll be, he'll be keen to, to support this. Is there any further, Councilor Peters? Would you be happy to write up a letter jointly with our mayor today to Breckland Council now?
Yeah, but I want to make, to make a...
That's fine. All right. I'm sure the mayor will be between the two of you. You'll make a fine letter. That is not an issue. As long as we know what's in it, that's the main thing, isn't it? Very briefly, Councilor Land?
I have a solid void.
Okay, so we have a second here. So all those in favour? Okay. Those against? One and two. Any abstentions? One abstention. Want to note that? The camera's just lying. That's the good thing about it, isn't it? We can take note of that. Very well. Thank you very much for that. That's been an interesting discussion. Move along then. Um, next point of the agenda. Well, that's a request. Well, Well, that's a request, well, item one thirty slash thirty-four. It's a request to join the Heritage Events Committee. I will bounce on to that because the person joining is the mayor, which is me. I'll be going quiet now.
I just put myself as the lead because it's quite difficult to ask the deputy mayor to lead an item. Since at mayor making, we approved the committee structure. And there's been a request from, from the deputy mayor to join the Heritage and Events Committee. And the purpose of this item is just to approve it. And that's where I'll link.
Last time, we're going to go quiet, we do need yourselves a proposal in a second.
I'm happy to propose that you write in.
Councillor Sharn, a second? We have lots of options. Smith here on side? All those in favour? Thank you, that's passed. Thank you very much. Also, we'll be looking forward to running the meetings. Item one thirty-two slash twenty-four, community engagement. So discussing and agree any consultation media release required to prove any media release that is required to specify in what format the media release should take, their social media posts, press releases, et cetera. Community engagements, do we have anything particular? Do we have any points to divulge or to publicize on our media as social media? Otherwise, no? No, that's all right, thank you very much. One. Community officers update, item in agenda one thirty-three slash twenty-four. To receive an update from the committee officers is the issue of the agenda. I think there's any decision required here. Okay, so that's all been dealt with? Okay. So there's just one item that I have said, stood up in the beginning, I've been told, was item one twenty-one, which is the approval of meetings from the previous council meeting. So happens when you're learning your way around, you're asking something, you get the idea of it. So it's a really, it's just to have a proposal in a second for the amendments to be moved. The proposal, both second round, I have the amendments from previous council meeting. Okay, thank you very much for that. Boy, that I left slowly to the agenda. And I believe that we are come to the end of the official meetings or discussion on present topic. Consider resolving the first one to the public for this admission to the Act ninety-six day. The rest will be excused for many remaining items of business on the grounds of the risk it would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the combination nature of the business to be discussed. Thank you very much for your attendance. You're all very clear, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you have a lovely.
It was a long-winded way of saying you've got to leave.
Have a good day, thank you.